I'd like to welcome to the Austin City Council Candidate Forum that's sponsored by the City of Austin's Ethics Review Commission. I'm Frances McIntyre, President of the Austin League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters will be moderating this forum for candidates to the Austin City Council Places One, Three, and Four. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization with both men and women members that promotes the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League does not support or oppose candidates or parties. The League members who are helping tonight are Lisa Harris, Stuart Snyder, Judy Klack, Anne Clark, Margaret Orange, and Gwen Santiago. We appreciate their participation. This forum is being televised on Channel Six and will be repeated many times before the election. Channel Six is to be commended for providing information for the public and exposure for all the candidates. The format tonight will be as follows: one-minute opening statements, one-minute closing statements, and rotating questions with one minute to answer. Our timekeeper will hold up cards denoting the time you have left. She will hold up one that says 30 seconds, and then at the end of one minute, there will be a "stop" sign. All the questions originate from the League and are unknown to the candidates. Before we begin, let me state that the views expressed here are those of the candidates and not the sponsor, the Ethics Review Commission, or the moderator, the Austin League. According to the guidelines of the League of Women Voters, there must be no applause or demonstrations of support or opposition from visitors to this room. Candidates are asked to refrain from any personal attacks of opponents. We have with us tonight, for Place One, Chris Riley, Josiah Ingles, and Roger Chan. And we will begin now with our one-minute opening statements with Chris Riley.
Thanks, Frances. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I want to thank everybody who's involved in making this possible. My name is Chris Riley. I currently serve in Place One on the Austin City Council. I was born and raised here in Austin. I grew up going to Austin Public Schools, went away for college, came back here for UT Law School, and then worked for 17 years as a lawyer, first for five years at the Texas Supreme Court, and then for 12 years at a small firm downtown. Over the course of that time, I got more and more involved in city work, both on the boards of various nonprofits, including the Neighborhood Association that I co-founded. And then I also served on a number of city boards and commissions, the Planning Commission, the Downtown Commission. And in 2009, I ran for and was elected to the Austin City Council. During the past two years, I've also been serving on the boards of Capital Metro, Campo, and CapCog, the Capital Area Council of Governments. It's been an exciting and challenging time. We've had some real successes at the city, made good progress on a number of fronts, but we continue to have a number of challenges. We continue to have issues, and I hope to have the opportunity to continue working on those challenges over the next three years.
Mr. Ingles?
Thank you. My name is Josiah Ingles. I'm running for City Council Place One. I've lived in the city for many years, and I've been serving as the founding president of the School For Children Act since 2006. I have also been working closely with local neighborhood groups as Great Panthers, LULAC, and the Coalition for Community Concern, being very involved in what's going on in the community. And I've previously ran for office for the Mayor of Austin and also for the State Board of Education. I hope to be able to bring accountability and transparency to local government, and I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
And I am Roger Chan. I too am running for Place One. I'm running for Place One because in 2000, I was brought from Washington, DC. I'm not a Texan, but I was brought here for my specific skill sets. During that period of time, it was very similar to now in terms of a challenging economic period combined with very robust growth. It's during hard times that experience matters most, as well as fiscal responsibility and a social consciousness. I bring experience both in a city that was larger than this, a top-five, our nation's capital, so I'm well aware of how to deal with many of these issues. None of them are new to me, none of them are easy, but I'm certainly much more familiar with finding reasonable solutions. I thank you.
Mr. Ingel, NRG is asking Austin Energy for a commitment to purchase power from a proposed expansion of South Texas nuclear project. Should Austin Energy purchase additional nuclear power? Why or why not?
I do not believe that we should purchase more power from nuclear power plants. The nuclear power plant takes a great deal of strain on the water, especially the aquifer in that area. It also poses great risk to the public, as we've all known, China, Japan's been having problems with their nuclear reactor. And I honestly feel that building more nuclear reactors puts us more at risk. The amount of risk involved if something was to happen is not worth it, and I honestly think that the city should invest more time and energy into renewable sources that cost less to run and operate, and also is better for our environment.
Mr. Chan, the same question. NRG is asking Austin Energy for a commitment to purchase power from a proposed expansion of South Texas nuclear project. Should Austin Energy purchase additional nuclear power? Why or why not?
I think when you talk about nuclear power or any other form, you have to keep it in context, sort of like the automobile at the turn of the century, to compare buying a car now based on the statistics of the early 1800s and 1900s. May not make the most of sense. When you look at nuclear power, it all depends upon the power plant, how well it was built, when it was built, how long it's been maintained. As a city government, we owe it to our citizens to provide them the best affordable energy we can. If we cannot produce enough ourselves, it's contingent upon us to find other sources. Whether this particular plant meets it or not is the real question, not whether it's nuclear or not.
Councilmember Riley, NRG is asking Austin Energy for a commitment to purchase power from a proposed expansion of South Texas nuclear project. Should Austin Energy purchase additional nuclear power? Why or why not?
No, I don't support an additional purchase power agreement with NRG. We went through a generation plan last year where we engaged the entire community in a very lengthy process to decide where we would be drawing our energy from for the foreseeable future. We looked at all the options and compared their costs and made a number of decisions. We decided at that time not to pursue additional purchase of power from nuclear sources, mainly because of cost. The cost of nuclear, really compared to the other things, was exorbitant. And in addition to that, our real needs are in the areas of renewables, and in particular meeting peak demand. We currently are doing okay in terms of our baseload and the load that is 24 hours, and that's what nuclear would be. So it doesn't really fit our needs. We really need to keep the focus on renewables consistent with the generation plan we approved just year. And I would also note that NRG has recently suspended its promotion of that purchase power agreement in the wake of the events in Japan, so that option's currently off the table.
Mr. Chan, a question for you. Austin currently has six council members and a mayor elected at-large in citywide election. What council configuration is best for Austin and why?
Having been a management position of a larger city, I can tell you that there are actually four standard forms of government. Each has to do with size of the city, thresholds, and densities. All small towns work on their consensus, mid-sized cities under a city manager, which is supposed to be nonpartisan, apolitical, and then large cities are under a strong mayor, single-member district system. The reason being, what we're experiencing now. If we do not switch to it, we will be forced, just like Houston and Dallas, because when you're a mid-sized city, politics has a nasty habit of exposing itself. At that point, you need to shift to a strong mayor system.
Mr. Riley, same question. Do I need to repeat it?
No, no, that's okay. I do support moving to a mixed system of at-large seats and geographic districts. The exact form of that system remains to be determined. The mayor has proposed a six-three-one system, essentially six geographic districts and then three at-large districts, one of which would be the mayor's seat. That seems like a reasonable proposal to me, but I would expect there to be a community process to decide just how many seats we'll have and where the boundaries would be drawn. I hope that we can get through that process and engage attorneys along the ways to make sure that we're acting in compliance with the Voting Rights Act, so that we will be ready to present a proposal to the voters by November 2012. Our city is just too large for every area of the town, of the city, to get the attention that it really warrants. And so geographic districts would be very helpful, because we could have members serving particular areas who can really get to know those areas much better. So I think it is time to get this proposal back before the voters, and I expect to continue working to do exactly that in November 2012.
Mr. Ingles, same question.
Thank you. I do support moving to a single-member district system. I've also been the only candidate for this position that has been actively working towards making this reality, building support for Senator Wentworth's bill, also building support for the local ballot initiative to force the council to put it on the ballot for November 2011. I also feel that now is not the time to let up. This current setting city council has another ballot initiative, something they want to put on the ballot to change the city's charter, and if they do so, 2012, which they are promising us, will not happen. So I also feel that in how the lines are drawn, however the law is crafted to amend the city charter, this setting city council, and no city council that ever sits here should be able to draw the lines, because if you allow that, then you're going to have jury mandating at some point. And so I honestly feel that it should be crafted in such a way that it should be up to the people and not up to the city council.
Councilmember Riley, what has gone right and what has gone wrong in the city's comprehensive planning process? Are there changes you would make?
I think we have made good progress in engaging the community. We've got a great advisory group onboard. We've got a number of people representing all different parts of the city that have been working very hard at overseeing this process. Had a number of great workshops all across the city, engaging people. We can always do better with additional engagement, and I'd like to see continued efforts to expand the outreach, but I'm satisfied that we've done pretty well on that front so far. We're just now getting to the most challenging part of all, which is the working groups that will delve into the real nitty-gritty of all the issues that are identified in the charter that have to be addressed in the comprehensive plan. So I can't, at this point, I think the jury's out. We'll have to wait and see how that goes, and I really encourage everybody to get involved in the process. The working groups present great opportunities to get involved in whatever issue you might be interested in. And so I would hope that everybody who's interested in that would go online at ImagineAustin.net and get involved. Thanks.
Mr. Ingles, same question.
Thank you. I feel that the comprehensive plan as it sits now does not represent the people. It has been corrupted since the very beginning. They hired outside consultants to tell our local citizens in this city council what our problems are, when the city and we who live here can tell the city council what our problems are and where we need things to be addressed. And we're very knowledgeable people. We are a university city, people with all kinds of degrees. We could have had consultants from here that have one step better, and that's personal knowledge of what's going on here. Also, as they've approached this and they've brought it to the local community, they've said, "Pick A, B, or C for all of these little decisions that ultimately make up the entire plan." And when I asked directly, "Well, what if this one idea isn't a good idea? How does that get to city council?" They said, "Well, we're not here for that. We're here for you to pick A, B, or C." And so therefore, the true viewpoint of the community has never really reached this dais, and I feel that we should go back and try to get some real consensus, but I do think that we have made some good progress.
Mr. Chan, same question.
Mr. Ingles is pretty much correct. I think the biggest problem that we had in the process is we do a very good job about bringing in the public interface. Look at this building, but we're not the Supreme Court here, and this doesn't look like a council. You're too far away. The problem is, we do not make use enough of our local experts, our local professionals, our local business people. It's almost to the exclusion of them, and that totally is inappropriate.
Mr. Ingles, how would you ensure that public testimony at council hearings is heard and considered in decision-making?
This current city council has actually made progress to prevent people from being able to testify, that if you testify at a city council meeting, then you can't testify for three consecutive meetings. You have to wait, which means some real experts that really pay attention to what's going on in city government won't have the opportunity to weigh in on areas in which they have knowledge on. And they've done this in order to keep the problem people out, the ones that come here and they consider wasting their time, but actually they've taken away the voice of the people even more. I say that we should undo that and let people that are knowledgeable, that follow the issues, be able to come here and speak, and that when they, when city council goes back to their offices to consider it, they should really consider it instead of coming up here with already their minds made up of what they're going to do. We've seen that too much, and I will not do that if I am elected to this position.
Mr. Chan, same question.
I would agree. A large part of the problem that Austin has is that this entire system is set up to favor the incumbents, the politicians, and not the people. In larger cities like this, where you have even a larger amount of citizens who are active, it's much more common to have them submit their statements in advance and to ask at that point to cluster them. We don't manage it at all, much like we fail to manage our resources in general properly. And absolutely, it's another reason why we need to have single-member districts that favors the people and not the politicians.
Councilmember Riley?
I think we've actually made good progress in the way we manage our city council meetings. Lately, our council meetings have actually been ending at a fairly reasonable hour. The meeting last night ended at something like 6:30, 7:30. There was a time when we were going till 1, 2 in the morning, and I think that really has a negative impact on, both on the ability of regular folks to participate and on the council's ability to absorb what people are saying. I think when we can get stuff done during regular working hours and everybody's awake and alert and focused, I think that serves our interests much better. So I would support, if we get into a time when we've got more agenda items to deal with, I would support having additional meetings to make sure that we continue having our meetings at reasonable hours. The rule change that my opponents were referring to actually only applies to citizens' communications that are about items not on the regular agenda. So those aren't even items that we're deliberating. Those are citizens' communications on general things. We have not placed any such limits on the input of regular people speaking, people speaking on regular agenda items. So that process remains available to anyone who wants to provide input.
Mr. Chan, what are your priorities for upgrading the city's infrastructure?
I would have to say the first thing we need to do, as long as we're a city manager for our government, return power to the city manager, so that the city manager can properly manage his departments. In terms of the enterprise departments, the utilities, water, electric, and all the other enterprise departments, we need to treat them as what they are. The current administration routinely raids their side funds, which prevents them from managing their departments. It puts them in fiscal disarray, and we're all paying for that now in terms of uncertain rates and uncertain service. So the first thing I would do is separate the system. This body is a part-time body. It is not an administrative body. Part of the problem with our whole agendas at council is they take on much, much more than this body is supposed to, and that's why it's too long, and it's at the expense of the citizens.
Councilmember Riley, same question.
With respect to our water and wastewater infrastructure, I think we need to continue working both on replacing our older pipes that have leaks, and we also need to continue the progress that we've been making on the pipes that provide reclaimed water, that allow use of reclaimed water for irrigation purposes. We've made great progress on that, and it's saving a lot of water. With respect to our transportation infrastructure, we have a lot of needs. A number of our needs are being addressed as a result of the transportation bond election that we passed last November. We're currently working on another bond election that will include transportation items for November 2012. Between now and that time, we'll have to have a wide, a community-wide discussion about other infrastructure needs, parks and libraries, so that we can gain the community's input to decide exactly what needs to go on that ballot in November 2012. But I very much hope that we can continue the good progress we can make on supporting transportation advancements and hopefully include an urban rail element in the package.
Mr. Ingel, same question.
Thank you. As regarding for the infrastructure, my first order of business that I would take care of is starting to look at our bridges. There was a study done that says that most bridges in America are near critical, and we, as a local government, have a past of just, we keep building new bridges and we don't examine the existing ones enough. And by reexamining our bridges, it also offers us the potential to take advantage of new building technologies, the way things are built now for bridges, which will give us more space for I-35 and MOPAC that we could offer, that offers potential to expand those roads and also help alleviate our traffic problems. This is an area I feel that the city hasn't moved on enough and hasn't looked at enough, and to continue to let it go, we're facing a disaster to happen eventually.
Councilmember Riley, what assistance, if any, should the city give to school districts given the budget crisis?
It's a great question, and one that we actually are asking the school district right now. We passed, recently passed a resolution directing the city manager to engage the school district in a conversation about the ways that we could provide help, and there are any number of ways that that might happen. And so those discussions are ongoing. They've already resulted in three agenda items. Two council meetings ago, we passed three items about things ranging from using federal funds related to obesity prevention to provide healthy lunches for school kids, to providing bike racks to schools, to working with the school district on better software to monitor truancy issues. There are going to be any number of ways that the city can help, and so we need to keep those conversations going. As a board member of Capital Metro, I'll also be engaging the school district in conversations about ways that Cap Metro might be able to help with the school district's transportation needs. The school district's needs are of concern to the entire community. It is a tremendous concern to all of us, and the city council needs to be engaged and needs to be working on identifying ways we can help.
Mr. Ingel, same question.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What assistance, if any, should the city give to Austin schools?
As most people know, we already fund after-school programs, but if city council continues to spend money the way that they are, they're not going to be able to deliver on the promise to help our schools. We can partner with the schools in ways to offer more tutoring and more things and take some burden off the public school system, but it's going to require real work, but not only going to the school system, but it's also going to require work in order to look at the entire budget as a whole and say, "How are we going to give more money to the school department in order to help with maybe transportation, or tutoring, or childcare, or whatever it is that we end up helping with?" We have to say, "We need to put our budget into priority." And if we don't put our budget in such a way that it matches the priorities of the people, then we're not going to be able to deliver on any kind of promise to help the school department. So I really feel that the budget and helping the schools is a critical part.
Mr. Chan, same question.
Who controls the money controls the organization. The problem that we have is a lack of fiscal responsibility in modeling here. What the school system needs is precisely some fiscal responsibility. We talk a good game that education's important, and yet usually the first programs that get cut are teachers. To me, that's unacceptable. There should be some sacred cows. Some of those sacred cows are health, education, and welfare. We have to take care of the people. And without fiscal responsibility, none of that's possible. Earlier, it was mentioned the utilities. Oh, great that utilities can do that, but if you rated the money, how are they going to do that? Same thing with the schools. We need to take a very careful look on how the money's spent. It's not necessarily true that they need more. They need to manage their resources better, just like this city needs to.
Mr. Ingels, Austin is currently reviewing the boards and commissions and their costs. How will you assess whether a particular board or commission remains valuable or has outlived its usefulness?
Well, I think that's actually a very good question, and it actually has a lot to do with society here, how people live their lives, how people spend their money, what priorities and needs the community has. As times go on, these things change, and so boards and commissions that are developed in order to help solve a problem at one time may reach a time where we don't need it anymore. And to continue to just keep funding it and just keep having it and try to recreate it into something else isn't helping the general budget, and it's not helping the boards and commissions to work efficiently. Boards and commissions, if not managed properly, can take a great strain on city staff and also supplies and how we fund and operate those things. And so I really feel that we must look at, at least have some kind of review benchmark, where every so many years, we review to see if it's even still necessary. Do we need to put it on a new track and see if we can accomplish something else with that? But to just let them exist for the sake of existing is not helping the people.
Mr. Chan, same question.
He's absolutely correct. I agree 100 percent. For a city to be vital, it has to be dynamic, and to be dynamic, you cannot be static. We have to set benchmarks. We have to set expectations, why we're doing what we're doing. Over time, we need to check, making sure that we're meeting our benchmarks, and where we're not, reevaluate, is it necessary to take a different course? He's absolutely correct. There's many boards and commissions that have way outlasted its usefulness, but another note needs to be made. As a city grows larger and more complex, we also need to make sure that who sits on those boards and commissions are also appropriate. Without public management background or some training offered by the city, we can create more problems than we solve.
Councilmember Riley, same question.
Boards sometimes do outlive their usefulness, and that's why we've been reviewing them. And in fact, recently, we eliminated one board that had been around for a long time, and it had actually had flagging attendance, wasn't even getting a quorum, and we finally eliminated it. We need to have ongoing review. I think periodic sunset review of virtually every commission would be helpful. I also think we ought to be more diligent about looking at the annual reports of the commissions. Each commission ought to be expected to have an annual work plan and report at the end of the year, assessing their progress on that work plan, and we need to keep an eye on those work plans, make sure that they fit in well with the work of other boards and commissions, and make sure that they're all, they're acting in sync. I think it's about, it's a matter of communicating better with the boards and commissions, and I'm hopeful that with the process we have in place now, we'll be able to get to exactly that result.
Mr. Ingels, what solutions would you suggest for the problem of rising appraisals and taxes for homeowners, particularly inner-city homes, where people have lived in their house for many years and have liked to stay in their neighborhood but cannot afford the rising property taxes?
This is actually caused by an underlying problem, and that problem is the city plans and even works to force development in many areas of the city, but it doesn't pay close attention to displacement of local businesses and residents that are already there. And I feel that it should be the policy of the city that when we put together an entity to go out and formulate a new plan of development, that displacement should be a large part of what we look at. To prevent problems as we try to better our economic standings within Texas and within our own economy, we need to work on making it for people that are low-income have a reduced rate of tax. The city puts a lot of tax on these people, and they should have a way of being able to pay a percentage of what they make as an income. People that are low-income that own a house should not be forced out just because a large development builds beside them.
Mr. Chan, same question.
He's partially correct. We definitely have to change our tax structure here. Unlike most major cities in America, we don't have many of the tax systems that they do, and we're blessed that we don't have to pay personal income tax and other things. Therefore, it pretty much narrows it down to real estate and sales tax, and it puts a heavy, heavy burden on those who have difficulty paying their real estate taxes. If we reexamine a user's tax where everyone contributes, and they contribute with accordance to what they spend and consume, perhaps that's a way to offset it.
Councilmember Riley?
This is an ongoing challenge. It's a challenge in many cities across the country. We have an attractive city. We have rising property values, and we have folks who are having difficulty staying in the homes that they've occupied for many years. I think we need to have continuing conversations about how we can address that. State Representative Eddie Rodriguez passed some legislation two sessions ago that sets up a Homestead Preservation Zone in East Austin. We've had limited success with that. I think we need to continue looking at that, and I think the legislature's looking at it right now and considering expanding it. We need to... We need to continue working with the community over there to see what options would work for them. We've looked at things. The zone actually allows a community land trust and other tools to enable people to stay in their homes. Some have met with a better reception than others, and so we need to engage the community, find out what in that zone is working and what's not, and to what extent can we seek to apply those tools throughout the city. I think this is going to be an ongoing challenge, an ongoing concern, and we need to have all options on the table. And so I know the state's already looking at that. We need to continue that conversation.
Mr. Chan, in November 1998, Austin voters approved Proposition 11, a bond package to build the Palmer Event Center and Palmer Event Center parking garage and improve nearby Parkland Auditorium Shores and Butler Park. The language of the question was authorizing the city of Austin to finance, construct, and develop the Town Lake Park Community Event Center Venue Project, which includes Parkland development and the construction of parking facilities, and to impose a short-term motor vehicle rental tax at a maximum rate of 5% for the purpose of financing the venue project. While motor vehicle rental tax funding was to be used for several projects, recent reports indicate that the lion's share of the funding has gone to the event center. Should voters be confident that bond funding will be used in accordance with the language presented in the bond questions? Please explain.
You hit it right on the nail. We've recently passed two additional bonds that have also misled the public, and that is why I'm running. That is totally inappropriate. I was the assistant city manager that built those projects. With the proper fiscal responsibility and public financing, they could have been funded differently. And oversights should have been there that were not. Our current bonds are written right now. It's been mentioned about our transportation bonds. It really has very little about moving transportation, and the public has been misguided on that. So you're absolutely correct. That is the problem. That is what we have to get on top of.
Councilmember Riley, same question.
I think the language at the time should have said that funds would be used for the operation of the facility, because that is what's happened. Now, the language was approved by the state attorney general, and I am convinced that the city's management of the project is in compliance with state law. But I do think that the language could have been clearer and should have been clearer in terms of providing heads-up on the ballot that some of the funds might be used for the actual operation of the facility as well as the construction of the facility. So I would absolutely support clarity in future bond elections to make sure that there's no mistake, that some of the bond funds may be used for operation in addition to construction and development. Ideally, we would make sure we have mechanisms in place to provide ongoing operation funding. The bonds are a short-term, the car rental tax actually is a short-term way of dealing with the operation there. It's not a long-term solution to operations. But even just for using it for short-term, the voters should know we're going to do that.
Mr. Ingles, same question.
Thank you. For one, I feel that the major problem is that this city council has too much leeway in how they word the bonds. And in every single bond, if you look back, if you really look, you can find a loophole. Did they use it or not? That's the question. And it's put there on purpose for they can redirect funds. And there should be a law that says that the city council cannot redirect funds. Once it's allocated, it goes for that purpose. Because by redirecting the funds, they're intentionally making something fail. One way or another, something will fail. I also feel that there should be a limit on how many bonds we can owe at a time. It seems like there's a bond for every single election, which just puts all the taxpayers, including myself and your children, in debt.
Councilmember Riley, what are the economic advantages and/or disadvantages to having the Formula One racing facility in our community?
That's a good question, a fair question. And unfortunately, we really haven't had that conversation yet. To date, the city council has not actually been asked to subsidize Formula One to any degree. What we've done is extend water and wastewater lines out to that area, which is a standard deal that we do for developments out there. It avoids the development of PUDs and muds, and it puts the city in a position to eventually annex the area. But that's a cost that is actually reimbursed by the developer. It's not a subsidy. There has been talk about additional subsidies that may be requested, but to date, there has been no request. We have not gotten briefed, and frankly, I'll be skeptical as to why we would put up any significant amounts of funding to support operation of the Formula One facility. I expect there will be some economic benefits, and I'm open to hearing about that and having that conversation. Frankly, that conversation has not taken place to date, and the council has not made any decisions, has not been asked to make any decisions about subsidizing Formula One. But I look forward to having that conversation in the event that we are asked to support it.
Mr. Ingles, same question.
Thank you. They told us that Formula One, the money they spent, was for they can control the waterways. But Austin has one of the lowest impact fees compared to other cities our size. We could have done the same thing by having proper impact fees, and the millions of dollars that they spent, a large chunk of that money could have gone to Health and Human Services and other areas in which we greatly need to solve problems within our community. You also, I feel that it is a valuable question to ask, is Formula One in line with our priority of becoming a green city? With Formula One, you can guarantee that tire companies and other companies that directly contradict our view of becoming a green city will want to move here. And the question is, are we wanting to move our city in that direction since we fought so long to become a green city?
Thank you. Mr. Chan, same question.
Actually, it's a mixed question, because it's through racing that most of the innovation in automobiles have been discovered. The question of whether or not we should be subsidizing in any form, I'm against subsidizing any commercial business. On the other hand, America is all about an open and free economy. They should be welcome to come, but certainly not with hands out. And hiding subsidies through forgiving fees and whatnot is not totally honest. Two things that governments failed, not just Austin specifically, but governments in general, our biggest failure is economic development and social programs. We do miserable jobs. We tend to over-regulate, serve fewer people, and serve them at a lesser amount. So the idea of a city negotiating a business concept is almost a failure looking for a place to happen.
Mr. Ingles, the city's historic preservation programs have been a topic of much discussion in the past year. What changes, if any, should be made to the programs?
The city is starting to move towards preserving properties. In fact, when I first moved here, this was a problem. Properties that were historical or potentially historical were being torn down. So I do feel that we have moved in the right direction of starting to look at and classify what homes are historical, which ones are potential historical properties. But giving tax exemptions seems to be always up for hearing here. And without any real discussion of what the benefit is to the community of giving them tax exemptions on their property, and with the deficit that we have, and now that the school department has a deficit even more so that they're facing, we need to be very careful that if we pass more tax exemptions, that there really is a cost-benefit to the community and not a further burden on the taxpayers and the school department.
Mr. Chan, same question.
Actually, by the city being limited by its taxing arms, we always have to think about, if we're going to remove a tax one place, where is that revenue going to be made up? So the ideal is absolutely correct of taking real estate, prime real estate, off the market. It needs a lot more consideration than we're giving it. And if we do that, how are you going to make that loss up? We cannot run the city into the ground by saving pieces of it. We have to save all of it, and we have to do it strategically and judicially.
Councilmember Riley, same question.
Our historic preservation programs date back to a time when we were losing a lot of our historic structures. The very integrity of our older historic neighborhoods was threatened by the fact that we were seeing a lot of demolitions of treasured buildings. So there is a balance that has to be drawn. We've got to do what we can to save older buildings. They add real value to the areas where they are. They are more expensive to maintain in general, and many homeowners have made investments relying on the expectation that they would be getting some tax benefit. On the other hand, these are very difficult times for the school district and for residents who are paying high property taxes. And some of those homes are higher-end homes, and we've got to set some upper limit on the benefit that someone would get when they own a historic home. We have put a process in place to make recommendations to overhaul those programs. Both the Landmark Commission and the Heritage Society have been working on this for some time. They're making very detailed regulations, recommendations that are on their way to council. I don't know exactly how that's going to set down, but I know we need to make significant changes.
This will be the last question, gentlemen. Mr. Chan, what can you do to help Austin's traffic problem?
I'm glad you asked that, because having come from a larger city, particularly one that had a living population of a million and a half, but a daytime population of commuters of 5 million, that really simplifies things in terms of knowing what to do. In larger cities, with the exception of Austin, our police are usually used in a punitive measure. However, in larger cities, during rush hours, it's not random where we have slowdowns. It's not random where it's going to be a bottleneck on I-35, 290, 183, or MOPAC. Those are quite predictable. In other cities, they have police out there ushering traffic along. Downtown, where we have intersections that are blocked, people ask, when are we going to get synchronization? We've had synchronization since 2000. The problem is, if you block an intersection, it throws that synchronization off, and it will not return for three hours. So in other cities larger than ours, they have police there. If you run it, block the intersection, you're ticketed. The other police usher it along. Our police have never taken a proactive position like that.
Thank you. Councilmember Riley.
There's no one silver bullet that's going to solve all our transportation problems. What we can do is continue to make progress on a whole range of transportation options, from our roads to our bus system, to a rail system, to our sidewalks and bicycle facilities. We've been making good progress on that, thanks in part to the bond election that we passed last fall, getting ready for another bond election, as I mentioned, in November 2012, which I hope will include an urban rail element. In the meantime, Capital Metro has been making good progress, getting the red line up and running, and actually getting ridership significantly up over the last few months. We have some continued work to do on that. With respect to our bus system, we're making continued progress on our regular fixed route service, as well as our metro access service for people with disabilities. We're also working on two bus rapid transit lines that should be up and running within a couple of years. All of these things are going to help. Not everyone is going to use any one of those options, but we need to make all those options available for those who do want to use them. And I'm very encouraged at the progress we've been able to make over the past couple of years, and that's certainly going to be one of my top priorities over the next few years if I'm re-elected.
Mr. Ingles.
Thank you. I think the most critical thing we can do right now is looking at expanding our roads and bridges wherever possible, adding more lanes. And the reason why I think that this is our most critical thing is because of the fact that, one, we already know that it needs to be done, and city council's past and present has postponed it, especially in the way of I-35, because they don't want to anger the elite that take that road. To work on that road is going to slow it down, but to not work on it is going to lead us to a major problem in the future. But you also have to look at the fact that Capital Metro keeps raising its rates, where it costs $60 for a family of two to ride the buses for a month, for a month pass, for two-month passes. And as they continue to up their rates, it will force families to buy cars. I had never had a car up until I ran for mayor. And then because of the rising rates of Capital Metro, I ended up having to buy a car in order to take my family around. And we're going to have a rising problem in this area, so traffic will actually increase on the roads as Capital Metro raises its prices. So we've got to focus on our bridges and our current roads.
Thank you all very much. Now will be time for closing comments. Mr. Chan, please begin. One minute, please.
When our nation, our state, and our city are undergoing very difficult economic times, it is not the time to think that we're going to spend our way through this. That's a time where experience, knowledge, and record comes in hand, where we can better manage our resources, better apply our techniques, knowing a good idea when it is good, how it can be implemented, and when is critical. It's not enough to have lofty ideals of how we're going to fix these things if, most of them, we either don't have the money, the time, or they're willing to do it. We also cannot afford to try to analyze a way through this. That's why experience matters. Someone who has led the city through this kind of problem before, and larger, is our best chance of getting out.
Thank you. Mr. Ingles.
Thank you. Again, my name is Josiah Ingles, and I'm asking for your vote, and I'm asking for your support. If you'd like to learn more about my campaign, you can go to josiahingles.com. You also can ask me any questions and send those along to me from there. And I would like to say thank you for having us. As your city council member, I will bring transparency and accountability to city government, something we haven't had in a while. And I know that I will work hard to rebuild the trust with city council and the community because we've reached a point where the public can no longer trust our city council, and that wound has to be healed, and someone has to bridge that gap, and I am willing to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Riley.
I want to again thank the League of Women Voters and the Ethics Review Commission for hosting this event tonight. It's so important for people to get to know the issues facing our city and to get involved in our city government, because we do have very critical issues and challenges that we'll be facing over the next few years. It's been an honor and a privilege to have the opportunity to serve on the city council for the past two years, and I'm very humbled at the sport I've been getting in my effort to serve for another three years. So far, some 19 organizations have looked carefully at this race and assessed all the candidates, and after going through a rigorous screening process, I'm proud to say that I've actually received the endorsement of all 19 organizations that have made an endorsement in this race. I hope to have the support of others in the community as I get out and visit with more folks in the coming weeks heading up to the election. I hope that the folks will continue to get in touch with me and get involved in their city government, speak up, let us hear from you, because we're going to have to engage the community meaningfully if we're going to rise to the challenges that we face in the coming years.
Thank you so much, gentlemen, for participating in this forum sponsored by the Ethics Review Commission. The Austin League of Women Voters Nonpartisan Voters Guide will be published in the Austin American Statesman on Sunday, May 1st, the day before early voting begins, and will also be available on our website, www.lwvaustin.org, as well as the Statesman website and the city's website. It will also be available in public libraries. One last reminder from the League of Women Voters, early voting begins Monday, May 2nd, through Tuesday, May 10th. This coming Thursday is the last day to register to vote for this election, and the election will be Saturday, May 14th. Be sure to vote and bring a friend along. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.